Good afternoon, everyone. We're here for a special city council meeting on July 18th, 2025. And are there any changes to the agenda? Oscar City Manager?
No changes to the agenda.
All right. If there's no objection, is it okay if we go to a public comment on this matter before we? Oh, yeah. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Biella.
Here.
Mayor Potem Bisher.
Here.
Mayor Delgado.
Here. All right. Let's go ahead with the normal process. Brian, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Ask for a moment of silence.
Sure. Join me in a quick moment of silence, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
All right. So we have one item on the agenda and our city attorney see online. Eat this online. Okay. Hello, Renee. I don't see you, but I'm sure you're there. All right, May, do you want to use this? Hello, Renee.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate everyone coming together on this short notice. We have a request from the Unstoppable Automotive Group there online. After the approval of the sales tax revenue sharing agreement, one of the conditions that the city council put on that agreement was that the name of the dealership had to be Mercedes-Benz of Marina. They went back and they discussed this with Mercedes-Benz USA and they received a letter on July 8th saying that that's their brand name and they did not have the ability to change that name. And so they have requested that we bring this to the city council and see if the councils what their input is and decision is on their request to make this change in the agreement. And Ken Roycroft Croft should be online to answer any questions.
Oh, yeah. You can hear me, guys and girls.
All right. If this matter were to be expanded to include terms and price other than the name, would it be appropriate for open session or closed session?
Are you asking?
Yes. So, so if you wanted to renegotiate this and provide direction for staff to negotiate something, then that would be what you could do. I'm not sure that the agenda is broad enough to include that. It is sort of limited to potential conditions that may be imposed on this agreement. So, but certainly as if you wanted to do something beyond that, then you can direct staff to come back at a later time.
Is one of the conditions, the arrangement for tax sharing?
No, that is part of the agreement.
Okay, let's go to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to acknowledge that tonight's meeting was disorganized, rushed. I want to apologize to both the public and staff. We don't have any members of the public here. I barely made it here both last night and tonight. And so really, I hope that this doesn't reflect on the city on how we do business. It is summer recess and a lot of our staff, I hope, are off on vacation. And when I was a staffer in the supervisor's office, I really valued these recesses and breaks because they were actually the only time that we got to catch up or do things that, you know, as for me, projects and stuff that I wanted to do. So I just would encourage that our city manager model healthy boundaries, respect time off. That's formally provided to our team. This time for me, you know, and our staff, it's not only a time for rest and bounce, but also time for maintaining a culture of trust and care. So I just again apologize to staff and the community for the lack of sort of clarity and everyone's in a hurry. I think I see two, two, maybe one members of the public and of course, because it's just confusing. So with that, in my research, I haven't been able to find a single Mercedes-Benz dealership in California that's located in one city but named after another. And so if approved, we would be the first and only one setting this precedent. And so the current, so just some of the dealers that I found across the state. And I'm just gonna read several of the many and many. There's a whole map online that you can look at. Mercedes-Benz of San Jose, Mercedes-Benz of Walnut Creek, Mercedes-Benz of Stevens Creek, Mercedes-Benz of Pleasanton, Mercedes-Benz of Temecula, Mercedes-Benz of Oakland, Mercedes-Benz of Arcadia. Mr. Croft, you can wait. Thank you. We're all gonna talk. Mercedes-Benz of Belmont, Mercedes-Benz of San Francisco, and then there are some sort of random ones that are named after like, I think, a last name or person, like the ones that aren't named after the city that they're in. Is like a somebody's last name, I think, is that is what the word is. So, you know, for me, it's more about like the name or where the sign is on the highway. There's this sort of like brand identity. There's marketing power. There's long-term recognition. And if we name, if the dealership, if we approve Mercedes-Benz of Monterey, we're giving that marketing value away and we will never get that back for the city of Marina. And we keep hearing how this project is going to put Marina on the map. Well, actually, it's putting Monterey in Marina on the map. It's not putting the city of Marina. We're losing that value. And this opportunity for exceptional and extensive name recognition and notoriety for Mercedes-Benz and Marina to be said, to be on collateral, to be, you know, mercedesofmarina.com, to be on the license plates, to be on the shirts. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And there is a value to that marketing, I believe. And so it's also Mercedes-Benz own marketing investment reinforcing our city name. And then the increased visibility and pride for Marina in a global brands footprint. And I want to repeat that. Because to me, that probably has the equivalent dollar value as a sales tax revenue. Increased visibility and pride for Marina in a global brands footprint. And I'm not sure when or if we're going to have that opportunity again. And so whatever decision is made tonight, we're either gonna brand with Mercedes-Benz Monterey, or we're gonna brand Marina. And so we hear from the community like, oh, you know, the past council or current council, we always sell out to the developers. Or we always sell out to the highest bidder. Or, you know, we sort of hear this, this community dialogue. And again, I'm disappointed that the way that this meeting has come about because we don't have any public participation tonight. But I have heard that. I think we all have heard that. Is that how over time councils before us have made decisions where the city has felt like they got the short end of the stick? And so, you know, I mean, I'm we're gonna miss out on a meaningful opportunity to brand our community and proudly put the city of Marina on the map, not the city of Monterey. In Pacific Grove, we would get that all the time. People think the bike path is Monterey or that the purple carpet was Monterey. I mean, we would get that all the time. And so a couple of, you know, thoughts that I had, I would be open to pausing and giving the auto group time to go, you know, I'm open to Monterey Bay. I'm open to Monterey County, but I don't, I'm not open to Mercedes-Benz of Monterey in the city of Marina. So I'm open to pausing, giving them time. They can talk with other cities. I don't necessarily know if there are any other cities that would allow Mercedes-Benz of Monterey to go be Mercedes-Benz of Monterey and Carmel or Pacific Grove or Salinas or King City or wherever, right? I mean, I think that that's a reasonable ask. And I understand and appreciate their history with that name. But I'm also, sorry, sure, I'm almost to the five minutes. Okay. But I also, you know, have heard like, oh, we're not relocating. We're building from the ground up. And so you can't have it both ways, though. And so, you know, another thing is I just, if this is a deal breaker, then maybe they're not the right community partner for us. You know, I don't think the city has necessarily gone out and talked to other auto dealerships. And no, might not be the same tax revenue as Mercedes-Benz, but there is a value, a dollar value to that marketing and having our name, the city of Marina, in the marketing. And so if it was, I don't know, let's say, Lexus of Marina, like for me, there's, there's value in having us in the name. That would make up for whatever tax revenue difference we potentially could miss. So I'm open to just pausing and, you know, exploring other dealerships and giving them time to see if Mercedes-Benz of Monterey County or Monterey Bay is an option to them. But I absolutely in no way will be supporting selling out our name, our pride, the city of Marina and being called, you know, Mercedes-Benz of Monterey.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Any other comments? Mayor Potem Bisher?
Just a question. Of all those dealerships you did research, do you know if there are any that moved from a city to a different city?
I don't know that.
Okay.
But I mean, how is someone gonna know that with ours? I don't, I don't think it matters, quite frankly.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry. Any more input? Thank you, Jenny. Councilmember.
Yeah, I would just like clarification. I think when we last spoke about this, that there was going to be the city of Marina signage on one of the, I think, the front facing. And is that the plan? I just want to clarify that.
So we're talking about the monument sign that would say, potentially say city of Marina? And does staff know if that's still in the works? I think it's something that the unstoppable group mentioned. They wanted to repeat from their Temecula layout.
Yes, and Ken can probably answer that question better.
Okay, Ken, so you will have a chance to talk on these other matters, but for this, at this moment, we just want to ask you the plans for the potential city of Marina gateway monument sign.
Yes, 100%. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I know it's Friday. I'm also supposed to be someplace tonight, too. I was trying to do it earlier. We'll talk about that later in the call. Yes, we still plan on working with the city to co-op a sign to your liking, design approval. I'll go over that in my presentation as well. That's always been our intention. One quick correction, I'd like to say there are actually 387 Mercedes-Benz dealerships in the country. Of them, there are 40 of them that are named a different name than the town they reside.
I'm sorry, Ken, for now, we're gonna get back to that. But for now, I just wanted to confirm your intention, like the city of Temecula has a city of Temecula, sort of a monument. They're not, it's not on the boundary of the city, but it's, it's what we're talking about here. More or less be a gateway monument sign. So similar to Temecula, was that your intention to do this in Marina?
100%.
Okay. And Renee, to our city attorney, is that one of the conditions in Exhibit A's?
So there is that any gateway sign be consistent with city monument design requirements and any dealership signage refer to Mercedes or Marina. So there is certainly some, let's say, some language in the resolution that would.
There's some, there's some allowance, but it's not a requirement, right? Is that correct, Renee?
That is, that's not explicit. It's not explicit. No.
Not a requirement. It's not a condition. Okay. I forget whose question that was. Councilmember Vialas. Do you have anything else you want to say, Councilmember Vialas?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Elizabeth? Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do that. Okay. Now, before we go to the public, I can't see because I don't have my computer. How many people are in the public? And normally what we do at this time, it's my mistake that we didn't go to the proponent. Is that correct? Right. So Ken, you will have, I think we will give you 10 minutes, Ken, to talk about anything and everything. Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, this isn't like an appeal hearing.
No, it's, it's an item on the agenda. And when there's a proponent for an item on the agenda, like a developer, we always give that developer and the public a chance to speak. And we give the proponent of the project, in this case Mercedes, 10 minutes to speak. And normally we do that before we go to public comment. Just I'm a little rusty because we haven't done this for a while. So because I kind of already went out of order to hear council members and I haven't yet spoken and Councilmember McCarthy hasn't yet spoken. I think Councilmember McCarthy and I are okay waiting until the rest of the process happens. So the rest of the process, let's go to the proponent of the project and give Mercedes, I'm sorry, the unstoppable group, the 10 minutes we often give our developer proponents. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back to the council. And I apologize for being out of sequence. Okay, so Ken, we're gonna go to you and we'll allot you 10 minutes and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thanks, Mayor. And so before we go into what I was going to present this evening, and I don't think it'll take a full 10 minutes, but I thank you for affording me the time. Just for the record, since it was mentioned previously by Mr. McAdams, as I started to say, there in the US, there are actually 387 Mercedes-Benz dealerships in the nation at, in real time today. Forty-four of those are named after a city or town other than where the business is located across the US. Now, there are quite a fair amount that had to move from one place to another because of land opportunity, much like we're doing. Other ones, they use the city that had the most marketability and went to a smaller town for space. And I did not interview all 44, but I'm aware of quite a few of them and why that happened. And I also spoke internally with Mercedes-Benz to get some clarity. Of those 44 dealerships that are located in a town other than they're named after. So for example, in Orlando, it's named after Orlando, but they're actually in Maitland, Florida, I believe. But I have to look at the list, but I do have it on my computer if you have any questions. There are seven that are named after the county they reside. And as a matter of fact, one notably right up the street from us or up the state from us, when we compete, whether it be in Monterey or Marina, is Mercedes-Benz of Marin. I arduously looked for the city of Marin. I couldn't find it. It's actually named only after the county. And so there's also one in New York, same thing, county of Orange. There's no town Orange. It's just Orange. And so these exist. And the average, I'm going back a little bit, those, of those 44 dealerships that are named or a town other than where they reside, the average miles between the two is 9.9 miles. Our move to Marina would be 9.4 miles. So this is very typical and about, what would that be? One, I'd have to do the math, but say 15% of the dealerships, maybe 20% of the dealerships. And so it does happen. Again, to be fair, I just wanted to let you guys know, we went to bat for this, for the name change and everything. All the three choices, meaning the two choices, and then obviously they want to stay the same. There's reasoning behind how they make decisions in Mercedes, and if, and being a, such a monster as they are, they, they go all the way to the committee. This is what they do. And the way this was approved, I, uh, just for clarity, have the council members be, uh, been forwarded or shared the letter, guys, that we received?
Yes.
Okay, so if you'll notice that letter, I don't have to read it, you can save us some time, right? But, you know, it was pretty telling what, what the issues were. And just so you understand how the business works, is if we were to change the name of Mercedes-Benz, besides all the factors in the letter, I mean, it's obvious that since 1957, it's almost a 70-year business, all the goodwill that goes with that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the heritage, et cetera. But back when that was actually named, much like when Riverside, which was actually a town now, but a city, but when it was named so, so long ago, they were very small locations. So the only way a Mercedes-Benz dealership would pencil isn't for a small town, it's actually for a larger market area. And that's a county in these cases. So Marin was the same way. And so that's just what they do as a business model, and it's nothing out of control. Because I know during our last city council meeting, and even over our conversations with Lane, et cetera, they said, if Garth could just do this, or Garth could do that, we don't have that leverage. We're a franchisee among a monster, you know, number eight, most recognizable brand in the world. And so, uh, we don't get to tell them what to do, they tell us what to do. And so we apologize, we couldn't get that done for you guys, and for our city, we would have been happy either way, honestly. The only limitation with if you, if they did choose to name it Marina, we are literally starting from scratch and building a brand-new dealership and lose the legacy of a 50- or 70-year business, I'm sorry, almost 70 years. And so we lose the, the, all the penetration, you know, you leave all the goodwill, the clients don't necessarily follow. That's just history. It has nothing to do with the difference between Monterey and Marina. It's like, literally, it's someplace new. So it seems like there's a new dealer opening, a new dealership. Now, that all being said, we are also very conscious of how proud we are coming to Marina, how, if, if this happens. I mean, it seems like it's, um, has some issues here. We, our intention, meaning Unstoppable, we will market heavy of where we are because we want to come to our place, we want to come to our town. This is within our, you know, planning, and this is exactly, I'm going to tell you what it says in a minute. This is just, remember, we're in the business of, of doing a great job in running a, a car dealership at a high level, more like a high-end hotel than normal car dealers. That's what we do. So we don't want to do anything that stands in the way of making Marina an amazing location and selling everything, you know, telling the whole world we're there. So we just get approval from MUSA for, for our ads, it will be included. Because we have to tell them where we are, much like when they moved Mercedes-Benz of Newport Beach from one location to another, and it almost went to Irvine, but then Newport Beach finally gave Fletcher Jones the land not to lose them, because it was getting a little sticky. They, um, but they would say, Jamboree in the 73, that told them where they moved to from the other location was more an industrial park. You, you're looking for those catchy, catchy Tang lines that sell where you are, right, to promote where you are, so people can find you easily. It'll 100% end up in our ad campaign. It'll aptly be all over our press. It'll be all over our headings, our logo, I mean, our logo, our stationery, our ads. It's, everything's going to talk about Marina, because we have to get them to us. Just knowing that's a sign of this guy doesn't get them, get them there. Just going by on Route 1 doesn't do it either. We have to reach out to the whole community of Monterey, the whole county of Monterey, to make a business of this size really pencil, and to bring in the money and, and tax revenue that we can to the city. I also know during our deep dive into how much money may or may not make for the taxes, and we went through basically negotiating the points or, or correcting the points in the sales tax agreement. What no one's focusing on here, one thing I can tell you, after being around the Mercedes brands since 1986, they never go out of business. Ever. They change owners, owners die, they change hands, other people buy them, much like Garth Y. and this one here, or Unstoppable Group buying the one from Monterey. It's only the third owner, I believe, in 1957. But they don't stop paying sales tax, or generating sales tax for the city. So this is a, a huge project for any city we go to, if we can make it work. So that aside, I'll go back to what I was going to say. I just want to make sure we're correct, and it was being assumed in the front part of the meeting. So, um, I do have a list of those, uh, the ones if you need to know. I, so, we've, you know, as far as what we've looked at, is we've agreed literally to everything in the resolutions, other than what we cannot control. There's six items, at least, let me just pull it up, I have it in my nose, please. I'm not going by memory. I have that up. Okay, so A, B, C, D, E, and F. The only thing we're not, we couldn't do is something we can't control. We don't make that decision, no matter how much we want to, no matter how much we prefer it. I mean, me personally, if you ask me, as a, as Ken Roycroft, a person, not representing Unstoppable in front of the city council, I'm a huge fan of the name Monterey Bay. But Mercedes doesn't care what I say. They don't, they don't ask us our opinion, they tell us what it, what it is. And this, the fact it's that old of a business, there's a lot of goodwill there, and that's what you do when you buy a business. You buy the, the customer book, and the, and the loyalty, and the community involvement. And even though the town next to Marina is named Monterey, it literally is in the county of Monterey, just like ironically, um, that the Mercedes-Benz of Maui is not in Maui, it's in Kahului. But the, but the island of Maui, and also it's the county of Maui. So it's an assumed market. Instead of, I'm in my small part of Hawaii, which is Kahului, which I've been to. So anyway, that's just, you know, a little bit of clarity of what we're dealing with here. And so what we're prepared to do and to make this a workable situation for us, meaning not just us, I'm saying us as a whole. Because one thing I can tell you, I've known Garth 32 years, he'd say the same thing about me. We're not, we haven't changed anything we're asking for. We'll do, we'll go to bat for it. You're our new partners, we're trying to get it done, and we did the best we could. We're not asking anything to kind of make a deal, we're trying to find out, we know we need to make this work. And if we can't do that, we can't make it work. There's no room there for us. This is a very expensive project. We see the future of this at the Dunes Marina. It'll be in everything we promote, everything we promote. And we, and, and we will do a great job at it, that's what we do well. Radio, television, ads, you name it. They, it will be busy, and it will come, and they will know where they are. They'll, they'll, they'll know we're in Marina. We have to. So the, the other part of this I'd like to share with you. So what, what are we prepared to do for this? This is a question, like, obviously, I've been talking to Lane and Shay, et cetera, I think everyone's been very gracious, great people. We really hope we can make this happen. Um, so just to be clear, yes, we're ready, you know, we will donate the land to the property, on the property to house the city of Marina sign. When Bruce was down to visit us, Mayor Delgado, we literally walked down to the sign. If you look at, I'm going to put up, I can't, I'm not sure, I can't share a screen on this Zoom. If you, if you were able to see the monument sign we have in Temecula, which I know Mr. Delgado has seen, it is, uh, it is way bigger than any advertising we do. The name on our building, you can't even really see in the picture.
Excuse me, Ken?
Yes.
The worst part of my job is, uh, interrupting and letting you know your time is up.
Okay.
But we have the ability to ask you questions, so please stay tuned. And at this time, we'll go to the public. If you, uh, would like to participate remotely, please raise your hand. And staff, I can't see who the attendees are, so if you help me out here. Okay, so please raise your hand. Pat, or Mike, or F. Tapia, or David? David might be amped, huh? We'll give you another moment for public comments to raise your hand. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm sorry. Mike, you slipped in just under the bar. Welcome, Mike, and good evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bruce. I, uh, I feel that Mercedes-Benz of Monterey would be appropriate. Um, there's other fish to fry in this town, besides worrying about some name. Marina just doesn't have the prestige. I think we should focus on fixing streetlights, fixing our medians, painting the streets, striping, and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. We'll give others a moment to raise your hand, if you would like to speak to this matter. All right, we'll, we'll close public comment. And, um, I want to ask Councilman McCarthy if he has anything to say, and then I have some comments. And we might have some questions for, uh, the Unstoppable Group. Brian?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I want to thank my colleague Jenny, both today and those of you on the dais, who historically have expressed some concern, um, over the name, your passion, you're in your heart about how important it is for Marina to truly be on the map. We know, right, the center of the universe is more and more coming and shifting towards Marina. And, um, there is a lot in a name. Um, so I just want to thank all of you for the passion that I've, I've heard both today and historically over that. And they're legitimate, right? We are agreeing to share $10 million of revenue, um, with this entity. That's a lot of money. Uh, we, you know, this, not this council, but a council, 20, 30 years ago, agreed under redevelopment to split money with the Dunes developer. And even today, we get a hard time for those decisions that were historically made. And so I do think that these decisions are important, they're serious, and the concerns are legitimate. I want to be clear, for me, the issue of the name, just totally upfront, not a deal breaker, not a huge, um, impact for me. I think that there are arguably pros and cons of, of both names. Uh, but having said that, I am, you know, certainly willing to get on the bus if there's a, a majority decision, uh, amongst this dais. So I'll just kind of put that out there. Either way, it shakes out. The challenging thing is, right, none of us has a crystal ball. We don't know what happens if we name it one thing or the other, because we're going to head down a path, whatever that path might be. And, uh, we can't kind of war game what this scenario would have looked like 20 years from now if we, if we chose the alternate path, right? So we're all kind of doing our best to serve the, the residents of Marina the best way we can. I continue to be excited about partnering with Mercedes and, um, certainly, um, having that extra revenue, uh, come into the city of Marina. I think it's really important to our future. And I think I'll stop for there, because I do want to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say about this issue. Uh, but again, I just have great appreciation for the passion that folks on this dais are showing towards, towards Marina. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Brian. I'm glad that Councilman McAdams, Jenny, has, uh, talked about the economic value long-term for us to, for the branding that would come, the, the value, the economic value that would come to the city of Marina were this to say Mercedes of Marina. That's a long-term branding economic value that we won't be getting. Uh, I have a question for our city attorney or our city manager. Uh, the Unstoppable representative, Ken, mentioned that, uh, they haven't changed anything that they've asked for yet. And it's my recollection that there was a big change asked for by them on the tax sharing agreement that initially was for a five-year period. And they asked for it to be changed to an unlimited number of, amount of time until the $5 billion revenue sharing was reached. Did I get that right? Is that a change that they've asked for that we've already, uh, accommodated?
That's correct.
Okay, so Ken, let me put you on the spot a little bit. When you said that you haven't changed anything you've asked for, uh, do you agree that you did ask for a change that was economically in your interest, and we granted that change?
It's kind of a two-sided question. We have always asked for the same amount of money. We need $5 million to make this project doable, but it doesn't work. We, we are, this project, just to be clear, is $10 million over, a very similar building, which we toured you at, um, in Temecula, uh, Mayor Delgado. We only came to look to split this with you guys. We're already paying the other five. So we know what our number is, and the sales tax agreement that was furnished us after those conversations came back as a performance-based agreement, which was not what we discussed. And they said it at a year time, because we thought it would be a five-year term. But then it was only to get to, then when the numbers were done by Debbie Kerr, it said it was going to take longer than five years. We still need to get to $5 million. It wasn't the time we're trying to push. The number of $5 million is fixed for us. We need that. It's not, it's not something we're trying to take advantage of, it's something we actually need to make this project work. Literally. And so, yes, but no, because we had a change, because we didn't agree to a performance-based, um, sales tax agreement. We didn't propose it. We proposed a sales tax agreement. It was very simple, you know, a simple letter. I wrote, I wrote it myself, I'm very familiar with it. And so, no, we didn't push back. We pushed back on the language, and it was going to limit us at three and a half. And then we looked at what the percentages were, and it actually was less. So we had to get to $5 million regardless. We're not here, we're not, not trying to, to beat you guys, we, we need the $5 million, it's real.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Ken. Uh, Renee and, and Lane, is that your recollection that they did not agree to performance-based, and when they found out, they asked for that change?
When we started the process, they asked for a five-year agreement, and, and the estimate was $5 million. And so they may have interpreted their five-year agreement, $5 million, be one thing. Um, on our end, as we put it together, our interpretation was five-year, and, and if we didn't get to $5 million, um, that would be it. And then at the meeting, they said, no, it was $5 million, five-year, and if we didn't hit the five-year, they wanted it extended to hit the $5 million.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
All right. Thank you, Renee. So I've taken my five minutes, I have more to say, but I'm going to, um, turn it back to, uh, Councilmember, or Mayor Potem, Visher, and, and then Councilmember Viala.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to thank, uh, my fellow councilmembers for the passion, definitely. But also the, the one member of the public who spoke, and, um, Mike Kennedy did mention that we need to, uh, focus on fixing our medians, et cetera, streetlights. We need money to do that. So for me, this is, Marina needs businesses, and to have this opportunity, I feel like, uh, Councilmember McAdams, I would have loved to see the name Mercedes-Benz of Marina, but it's for me, it's no deal breaker. It's like Sea Monterey, when they changed the, the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau name to Sea Monterey, first, like, oh, they should make that Sea Monterey County, but that doesn't flow, really. So I got over that, and we know that's for the whole county. I can get over this as well. It, it's. And as, but I do have the question, and that's probably for our city attorney. We failed to really require Mercedes-Benz to make a, um, city, welcome to city of Marina sign. And now I hear they will donate the, the land for that, but could we still throw that in as a requirement? That, please, um, give us a beautiful welcome to Marina sign?
I think you can clarify your condition, certainly.
Okay, that will be my condition. So.
Anything more?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Councilmember Viala?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification on what Council, uh, Mayor Potem, uh.
Give him one?
Uh, just a clarification to what Mayor Potem just said. Are you saying the welcome sign is different than the, the, the gateway sign that we were talking about?
No, no. I meant the gateway sign.
Okay.
Monument, whatever you want to call it.
Got it.
And that, and that, that is, has, that's already in the conditions, that it needs to be, um, consistent with city monument design requirements. We just didn't require for them to make it.
Right.
So this is our chance to still, to clarify.
Yes, okay, that was my clarification. Also, I just want to make sure that, um, Mr. Croft had the amount of time that he needed to share whatever he was doing before his time ran out, and whether it's, you covered everything that you wished to, because you were just about to say some more important things, I thought, and then there was no time. So, um, I just want to ask if there's a way that we can provide him with that time, because I feel like I'm still hanging on the edge of what he was going to say, and it's important. And then just, uh, another comment. Um, I appreciate, um, uh, Councilmember McAdams' initial, uh, thought about the whole name change. I thought that was a really important thing on, when we discussed it. However, I, I want to be candid and say that to risk not having Mercedes-Benz, uh, come to Marina does not outweigh the insistence on a Marina, um, sign, a name change. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I know we're not here to kind of renegotiate the other conditions, but there is this concern about the sign that I've heard from several colleagues. And to be clear, they're not, my understanding is they're not donating the land, they're agreeing to put a, a sign on their land. And why that is important is because, um, oftentimes, if, if the condition isn't written appropriately, when they go to sell Mercedes of Monterey, um, someone else may come in and say, well, wait a minute, this is our land, we're going to do whatever we want with it. And so, um, and I, as a planning commissioner, I've seen this happen time and time again. Oftentimes, the example I'll use, because it frustrates me, is that our planning commission very strongly, uh, when the Walmart was put in, they said it needs to be painted brown, they thought that the earth tones were more appropriate, and staff administratively told Walmart, no, paint it blue, it's fine. Didn't make me happy, but it happens. And so unless there's extremely strong language, and, and I guess this is for the city attorney as well, that somehow requires them to do certain things in perpetuity, assume that it's not going to be. that somehow requires them to do certain things in perpetuity, assume that it's not going to be there for more than five years. That's the way I handle it. And I think that everyone on this council would be wise to think in the same terms. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there for possible more discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now let's go to McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I allowed to ask Mr. Croft a question? Okay, so I think if, so your expectation would be that if, if you weren't going to be in Marina, but you were in the county of Monterey, that regardless of any city, wherever you were in Monterey County, it's a total deal breaker. You would be Mercedes-Benz of Monterey.
It's not my opinion. This is the response from Mercedes-Benz USA. We didn't know what was going to happen when we submitted the request, which we did on our mutual behalf. And now that we know that, I'd have to assume they'd be the same way in any, any city of that area.
And so what if you weren't able to find a city that agreed to that? You would not move? You would stay in Monterey?
Again, I don't, I don't answer from Mercedes-Benz USA. I'm sure you can imagine that. They would have to make those decisions accordingly, but I know from a corporate partner or our overarching partner has told us that's the way it is. So therefore, we'd have to go and assume that's how it's going to be wherever we go. And if it doesn't, that's a whole other, but I can't, I can't conjecture what they would do. I have no idea. I, I thought they'd be more flexible, to be honest. Just as a person, I thought they'd be open to Monterey Bay, but it didn't turn out that way, so.
And then you had mentioned how Marina would still be included in your marketing.
Oh, yeah.
How, how is that? You're, you're going to be saying, come to Mercedes-Benz of Monterey in Marina or in the Dunes? How, how, how would you include Marina in all of your marketing and all that list of, of great stuff that you spilled off?
Well, it's actually what we do. So I don't know if it was a spiel, but I do know that the five points I had to say, which I will say when I have afforded the time, one of them was, although we need approval from MB USA, which we do. It's, it's sorry, it's what it is with these type of manufacturers. Our intentions to use ad campaigns, which will preferably say for, or we'd like to say right now, it either say, come, you know, come to the new Mercedes-Benz of Monterey located at the Dunes of Marina or the city of Marina, whichever is approved or whatever we would like. I mean, as a group, listen, we're here to work as partners with you guys. We don't want to be contentious. You know, we, we're looking to work together. If we can get through this, we want to build Marina. We're not looking to operate on the edge of a town. We want to build, build Marina. That includes the Dunes and the greater Marina community. And the only way we can do that is to put in our ad campaigns. And one thing Garth does, he always is all over the radio and he's great at it. And so he will be saying it and it will, it will be said, we just get it approved. So as he said, we can't promise what we'll say, because until it's approved by their ad campaign, I mean, their ad approval committee, I think it's called. This is just what he's proposed to me and that's what I'm sharing with you.
Okay. And then the welcome to the city of Marina, that would be below the Mercedes-Benz of Monterey sign? Or what does that look like?
If, is there a way for me to share my screen? I'll show you what one looks like. It's way bigger than that.
Yeah, so we'll move you to be a panelist.
Okay.
You are a panelist, so you should be able to share now, Ken.
All right, give me one moment. Let me just get to mine.
Thank you, Doug.
Sorry, guys. I'm operating from a different office, so let me see if I can pull it up. Yes. Can you see my screen, folks?
For running the, the audio video?
Yep.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay, just a moment. Let me get to it and move it to the one I want to show you. So if we go here, sorry, guys, I'm age-appropriate. I'm not as good as some other people, so. Let's see here. Sorry, guys. I'm, I'm sorry to burn your time. I'm doing the best I can here.
You're doing fine, Ken.
I'm working with two screens, so it's a little bit of a challenge. There we go. All right, one second. There we go. Can you still see my screen?
We can see you.
Okay.
I saw your screen earlier with about five bullet points on it.
All right, so I'm going to change that so I can actually put that one up first, then I'll do it real quick. Okay? It'll be fast. There we go.
All right, that sounds good.
All right, we're ready. I'm going to make it PowerPoints, but not presenting them, obviously. Let's see here. Here we are. Okay, can you see that screen?
We do. We see the city of Temecula monument sign.
So if you look at the sign, folks, this is literally what you see coming down the 15, which would be equivalent to R1 in the Marina location. If you look at the size of the city Marina sign, I said Temecula sign, it is substantial. If you look at the sign of our Mercedes-Benz of Temecula sign, which is the one that Mercedes requires of us. Sorry, that's exactly what the, at those times, that was brand compliant. And so if you look at it, it's tiny. We're not about just selling what we do. We want to sell the benefits of the city. And that was Garth's idea from the get-go. And we actually did the same thing we were proposing with, with the city of Marina. We, we basically provided the land and we've had a great relationship with the city of Temecula. It's never been an issue. And this is literally how I found the dealership when I went to see Garth when he first built this place. I went by it on the freeway and I had to find how to get there, because I saw the city of Temecula. I'm here in Temecula. Oh, that's the dealership. Oh, that's great. And I got to hoop around to actually get to the location. So it's, it's, it's real compelling and we want to do something that matches your sign requirements. One of the second things we wanted to offer in that, we'll work with Genzo, we'll also on our, our diamond, our expense, to make sure they could design a sign with your design approval. So that way we have a really great welcoming sign to the city of Marina. That's really what our passion is. So that's something we, we already plan to provide and would pay at our expense.
Okay, so there will be a city of Marina sign and then above it will say Mercedes-Benz of Monterey.
Yeah, so if, yeah, if you see, if you'll see, I'm going to move to this.
Okay, that's, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Ken.
Yeah.
That was it for that question. We may be asking you others. We appreciate that. Any, any more input, Jenny, at this time? Okay. So I hope that we can get this gateway monument language confirmed to be a condition that will be satisfied. And I hope that it speaks to the monument sign maintenance and the term of years. So it's not, if they sell it in 10 years, they, you know, the, the, the monument sign goes away. And just in deference to Councilmember McCarthy's concern. Now, the reason this is touchy in public is because normally we discuss terms and price in closed session. But it makes logical sense to me that if we're losing the economic value of Mercedes of Marina, as Councilmember McAdams, you know, aptly described for decades, right? There's a, there's an economic value that, that we're losing, that we did not expect to lose when we last spoke and approved the draft of this agreement in front of us. Now the draft is different and it has this sign issue going in a different direction than we, 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 we had hoped. And so long-term, there's a revenue loss to us. And having a gateway monument as a sure thing, you know, that there's some economic value to that, that we get back. Because we weren't, we weren't yet asking for that to be a requirement. As we, as we know tonight, we have to make a change for that to become a requirement rather than just a possibility. And I understand that they need the $10 million to pencil out, or sorry, the $5 million from us to pencil out. But thinking logically, if they're here to stay for 10, 20, 50 or more years, there should be a point in time when they could give, start to give us back some compensation for the loss of our long-term economic branding value. So one option I thought before I came here is drop the $5 million to some equitable amount that equals what we're losing. Maybe that's $4,000, you know, drop it from $5, $5 million to 4.5 million. I didn't know the number and I wouldn't want to just, you know, pull a number out of the air. We hear today that, that probably wouldn't go for that, because they need the $5 million to make it work. But do they need every dollar of that $5 million for the next 50 years to make it work? I mean, if we said, give us a dollar, or give us a thousand, or drop that $5 million to, by 20,000 to $4,980,000, would they really say that is unacceptable? At some point, I mean, I'm being ridiculous here, but, but there is a, a point, we could drop that $5 million and, and balance the loss. But I'm not even going there. I'm talking about in the future, that today, during this agreement, whether it's now as a condition or it's a closed session item tomorrow or some point in the near future, we could add to this agreement that there would be a revenue sharing clawback at year 10, or year 12, or year 15, to try to recoup the economic value that we understand we will be losing because of the change that we're asking, asking for tonight. We're asking ourselves to change so that we'll never be Mercedes of Marina. And anyway, so that's my idea and I'd love to hear other people's comments. And then we'll, I think I'd like to ask Ken his opinion of that. And Kathy, if you wanted to ask Ken more questions, such as what were you going to say when you ran out of time? Let's turn it over to Councilmember Biala at this time.
So that's my first comment, that is, is for you to have the time to say what you, what you had planned to say that couldn't. I just want to respond also then to the mayor's comment right now. And I, I could understand your reasoning, but the current gateway sign that would say the city of Marina is pretty fantastic. It's a very visible, it's huge. I, I, I don't know that I could say we're losing some future marketing value. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that I truly believe that that is, is so. So if we could have Mr. Croft continue with his other points, I think maybe there's maybe three or four that you haven't said yet.
I needed to cut you off earlier at the 10-minute mark and we're, we're asking you, Kathy's asking you now to please continue what you were going to say.
Sure, I, I mentioned a couple and thank you, council folks, as well as Ms. Biala. I appreciate that. You know, I was going to comment on two things. So I'll comment on what you're asking and then I'll also comment maybe if you're open to it on El Dorado's question. So what I was, came here prepared to do, right, is to provide land for the property to house the new city to Marina sign. I think that it's certainly reasonable for us to put language in to make sure you're protected. And we could then present that to a future buyer, not that we're planning to sell it. Garth says to do things in a legacy fashion. However, you know, it's, you never know what business does in 20, 30 years. There's no sense for you guys to be leveraged as a city for that sign at that point. So I think that that'd be reasonable to ask. Like I, we mentioned, or mentioned a moment ago, we would work together to make sure that sign is state-of-the-art with your approval and design agreements and, you know, approving all the plans, et cetera, work together with the city. But using Genzo to make sure it's state world-class and state-of-the-art and really represents Marina well. I think that Ms. Biala mentioned this. I also think that, and I'm not sure if you saw this, El Dorado, but there's something special that when it's an edifice, it represents a city, the city of Temecula, I'm very close to, amongst all the city, city council folks, planning commission, mayor, public works director, a lot of them at this point, and I live local in town. And every one of them said it's such a, such a monument for our town. And we say our town, not where I could guess there, or we, you know, just sell stuff here. So we're very, very familiar with what it does. We're very bullish to what we do for it. And we're very proud to be able to be that, you know, that head of the spear, if you will, and showing people that not only is Temecula here, but we're doing it at a very high level. And in this case, it would same thing with Marina, as you guys are growing and you are, and we're very bullish to go to Marina. Garth and I talk about this daily, if not weekly. So we're, we're all in, you know, now we'll just see if we can get this done. I mean, there are some issues for us here that, you know, if it doesn't pencil, we can't do the deal. I mean, that's, it's that clear. So we need to make sure that it's real and it's, and it's fair and equitable and see if we can get this done. So the other couple of items were very quickly, as you said, we agreed to design approval to work closer to the city to meet the sign requirement expectations. We want to make sure the language is said exactly right. One of the things we also want to do is, we mentioned in our earlier meetings with you guys and inside conversations as well, we want to host city Marina functions within our business in those both balcony arenas. But Garth mentioned something to me on the phone call I had with him yesterday, he's out of the country, that we want to dedicate it as the Marina Room as a place for you guys to entertain, not just festive things, but also for meetings and so forth, as you may, as you need. That's, I think it's just a sign of what we, what we feel of making it something special for the community, not just a business that did, you know, that's in your town. That's not what we're looking for. And last but not least, I already, I already reviewed the ads and the ad campaigns and so forth. So I, I think that, you know, you've kind of heard my position on all that. It's not really mine, but it's Garth. I want to make sure I could represent it properly and just kind of do my best to, you know, express not only our excitement and willingness, but also the severity of what, what this means to us and tax dollars, et cetera. I mean, we, we came with a handshake, one letter deal, deal to Lane after we met and said, this is just what we need to get this done. And we kind of meandered through here to, to the city council again. And we're in a, a time burn, because we're already about a half a million dollars in this project. And one thing that was not mentioned, though it was mentioned internally, and I did mention it to Lane as well, is that we've been penalized already for how slow this has taken. There's, there's a 1% bonus, you have a 2% bonus. It's a, a bonus, one of the bonuses from Mercedes, which is quite substantial. They took 1% or penalty around, because it didn't start construction. I just submitted photos and so forth that Shay started moving land to see if they'll approve that. And they're waiting patiently to see if this is approved at the city council. Matter of fact, they called me this morning. And so we're on a tightrope, because if we lose that 1%, we also have to walk. Because that's half of a bonus. That's half of what we make sometimes. And it's just, we're trying to get this in a time where many financial advisors are telling us not to do this because of the economy we're in and there's no certain end to this. But Garth and I believe in Marina and we believe in what we can do here and we can see it as clear as day. And we're here in front of you with our, you know, open hands and saying what we have to say. It's not, it's not a business deal for us. And it's, it is business, but it's not a business deal for us. We're really telling you where we are, what we need and what we have to do to get this done. And when there's enormous pressure from the manufacturer again, then this needs to get done. That's why we called, and I apologize to take a Friday night. I'm taking mine as well. But we have to get it done for them. If not, this is a challenge and it's a big challenge. And then we have to go back to the drawing board in a big way. And so I just want to share that and please ask any questions you might have if you need to at this point.
Thank you, Ken. Did you say if the Mercedes doesn't give you that 1% bonus, that $500,000 value of bonus that you would have to walk away from the deal?
It's not a $500,000 all that. A, a, it's not, this $500,000 has nothing to do with it. It's 1% of our monthly margin. They penalize you based on the construction.
Okay.
Starting, it's a construction delay. And they penalize you because it was already been proposed. It was supposed to start on, I want to say it was June 28th, but I have to look at the document. And so if we get it done, if we, if we can get this done and we can break ground before September, we'll get that back, because we've proven we can start to construction. If we do not, that's why we did a special session. It's permanent.
Okay, so I'm sorry that I was misunderstanding the $500,000, but if you don't get the 1% penalty removed, then you will have to walk away from this project.
Most likely. I can't make that final decision. Only Garth does. That was talked between us. Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that comment that I thought you said. Thank you. Kathy, you still have the floor? All right, let's go to Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the sign and it's very lovely, but I'm just not able to connect the dots or the fascination of a single sign on, on a highway. So for us as the city decision makers, we're making a huge branding decision for the city of Marina that will impact our city's identity and visibility. And so this name of Mercedes-Benz of Monterey, of Monterey in Marina shifts that brand recognition and marketing power away from our community. And so we're talking about thousands of impressions every year on license plate frames, online searches, merchandise, national dealer directories, plus the millions of dollars that I'm certain over time, Mercedes-Benz will invest in the marketing of this dealership. So I just want to make very clear that that's what we're walking away from. And, you know, thank you for the sign, but for me, that doesn't add up to, to the magnitude of this economic, you know, just what the mayor had said. You know, I mean, that's what we're leaving on the table. I mean, that's what we're leaving on the table. I do really like what you, what you've said, and for me, it was hard for me, you know, when I was thinking about this with the short amount of time that we've had to prepare, it's like, how do you put that dollar amount to that, though? You know what I mean? Like, so we're talking about, let's even say for 30 years, you know, what, what dollar amount do you put that we're losing with, by marketing Mercedes-Benz of Monterey? So, so how do you even quantify that? And of course, yes, you know, we are receiving the sales tax revenue. But again, you know, we haven't even talked or explored other car dealerships where, you know, we would get sales tax revenue, and plus possibly the branding, marketing, and notoriety that the city of Marina deserves. So I'm not drinking the Kool-Aid on the sign, I appreciate it, it's lovely, it's nice. I don't like that it says, you know, city of Marina, and then right above it, it says Mercedes-Benz of Monterey. I expressed that at the first meeting that we had. I, for me, when we talk about legacy work, and just as, don't get me wrong, the sales tax revenue is huge legacy work for our community. Like Mayor Protem Fisher said, you know, we have to pay for streets, we have to pay for the amenities that our community deserves, but it's going to be hard for me to drive by coming home from work every day to see Mercedes-Benz of Marina in bright lights on the highway. Or, I'm sorry, Mercedes, I know, that's how much I want the day, right? Mercedes-Benz of Monterey. I mean, we're going to have to look at that all the time, you know? And, and not only that, but when and if the community says, oh, when did that happen? Well, here we have all these special meetings, and nobody was at the meeting, and we didn't really, you know, have an opportunity to engage the community. And so this is a big decision. And so whatever we can do to, you know, sort of stop that dialogue of the city council, you know, I don't want to hear in five or 10 years how this council sold out to the Mercedes dealership, or whatever. You know, we hear that plenty with other developments that perhaps didn't go the right way. And so, you know, this is a big decision that we're making. And, and I appreciate the sales tax revenue. And I also appreciate fighting for the city of Marina, you know? Like, I'm tired of being the little step, what is it, the redheaded stepchild of Monterey Peninsula? And we're doing, I mean, we're, we're sort of giving that away. So I, I think those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to, we'll go in a moment, we'll go to Mayor Protem Fisher. So I think the monument sign, as depicted in that shared slide by Ken, was huge and much more visible than the Mercedes of Temecula sign was in the background. So I do think there's some economic gain to that monument sign, we'll call it. And there's some economic loss, as Jenny has said, to the, not only the Mercedes Monterey sign, but the Mercedes Monterey name going for, going into the future. So there's a loss and there's a gain. There's some other losses, there's some other gains here too, right? I think we can all understand that there's economic value to the stationery and the radio ads and the TV ads telling you to come to Marina for a great product, and and while you're there, maybe we have a joint ad campaign where you enjoy the theater, you enjoy the all-inclusive playground. There's a lot of ways where, where we can partner in different realms. The Marina Room, and before tonight, we were told from the very beginning that they expect to have meeting rooms for the public, there's some value there. So there's some, there's some losses and gains, no matter what we do tonight. But I would like to hear from the city manager on this potential, it's kind of unusual, I suppose, for a future revenue sharing that we could ink now to begin in 10, 15 years. So when people say, you sold out, we said, no, we understood the economics, and, and it didn't work out to, to reduce the $5 million value coming in, but it worked out that in the end, we'll be made somewhat whole for our branding loss, economic loss. Anyway, so I'd like to turn over to the city manager.
It's hard to, hard to quantify right now. Haven't, haven't really thought about, so you're talking about how we could clawback whatever X number of revenue 10 years from now.
Or 12, or 15.
Whatever.
They're going to be here, you know, hopefully for
Yeah, and it's their brand.
Two lifetimes.
Even as you look at the, the estimates of the next five, six, seven years, as their brand name develops, their revenue stream develops, or sales tax stream develops. I think that is something that we could certainly sit down and talk with them about and see what type of creative arrangement that we could put together. And all these discussions, these are all open session discussions, so I can get some direction from council and go back and talk with them, talk with our team, look back in Tori, our finance director, and we could come up with some ideas and potentially bring those back.
Yeah, even if it's year 10, they start to contribute $20,000 a year to the city for city celebrations or something like that. It seems like there's got to be some dollar figure that we could bring the 5 million down from now, which I know nobody really wants. That was, you know, in the extreme, it'd be something small. But likewise, in the future, there's got to be some dollar value that they would be able to afford, given that we're deciding that we can afford a loss in the economic branding value. Anyway, okay, so we've heard the city manager, but we haven't heard from council. So right now, it's just on the table, an idea that we're talking about. Now let's go back to Mayor Protem Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to make a decision. We know there's a time crunch, and to ask for requirements that we cannot close the deal now, that's, we need to decide now. And I don't want this council to be known as the council that missed out on Mercedes-Benz coming to our city. And I will repeat, and people don't like me saying this, but I always heard Marina could have had the Costco. The Costco doesn't say the Costco of San City. The Costco is in San City, San City gets all the money that I spent there, that thousands, tens of thousands of other people spent there. And I've always heard Marina could have had the Costco. I don't want people to say Marina could have had the Mercedes-Benz. And they let it slip because they didn't like that the name could not be changed. So that's my, and, and any other conditions, we need to decide now. If we can get that, a beautiful gateway, gateway sign with the name of our city. And I've joked before, and I now say it's not even a joke anymore, in the future, when people will ask, where's Monterey? We'll say, oh, it's just south of Marina. Because we are growing, we'll have a beautiful sports center, we'll have so many, there's so many good things happening in our city. People know, they will know where Marina is. So that's for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Viola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the bigger perspective, as, as Mr. Croft said, is that they are willing to, to bring this dealership to Marina at probably the worst and most uncertain economic times that has been pretty much in a very long time. So I, I think we have to be realistic and say, they are taking a huge risk in doing this. This is not, you know, a slam dunk for them either, because none of us know what's really happening in the larger perspective of the US economy at this point. So I, I don't want us to lose sight of that. And then we are looking at the 5 million as a loss for us. This is an incentive program, we are going to still get revenues from this. So we shouldn't be thinking of it, we're just giving them 5 million and not getting anything back. And I think, again, that, that we have to hold those thoughts in our mind when we're considering this. I don't want to lose the opportunity, as I agree with Mayor Protem, that we need this, this develop, this project here. And we're on the cusp of being able to do this, and there's a timeframe. Whether you, it may be that people are not believing that we have actually this timeframe that is important to the Mercedes-Benz, but I think it is, and I think it's real. So I think we need to pay attention to this. And the other thing is, if we're going to now try to devise some kind of financial arrangement from 10 years from now, I am totally not in favor of that, if that risks our being able to close this today. I mean, I, that doesn't make sense. I think we might be nickel and diming when we've got a huge decision to make about initially what's been asked of us to do tonight. So I just want to say those things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of reading the tea leaves, I mean, it's clear a majority supports this name change. So as I promised, I'm 100% on the, but I support that generally anyway, although I appreciate the concerns that have been raised. But I do, and I think we're going to get to a vote soon, but I do want to take the opportunity to raise a couple of points. One is, and I've said this in the previous open session, the land is a goldmine. And good for Shay for owning it, and great for Mercedes for being in a deal to procure it, because it is land that is, I think, going to be well worth their money. Quite frankly, if Shay wanted to, they could sell it to an investor that would sit on it for 30 years, like the Walmart land. I mean, I would invest in that land, because it is a great opportunity. But I think Shay has said, no, we want to see that land developed. We want to see our master plan community come to fruition, and for that, I appreciate both Shay and Mercedes. You know, Shay could also sell it to Pontiac Firebird of the Ford or Badlands, or whatever it is, right? And, and not accept an incentive, and then the name is out of the question, they can name it whatever they want, right? I mean, Mercedes has only been gracious enough to entertain this idea of a name change because we are partnering with them in this incentive type of format. Couple of questions, one for Lane, I'd heard a rumor that this, that there was an agreement or discussion about the sign not facing the highway, the Mercedes of potentially Monterey sign not facing the highway, have you heard that, or?
I've not heard that or been part of that discussion.
Maybe a question for Ken?
And if you're with us, can you, you and Brian answer the question?
Yes, I am.
Can you state the question, please, Brian?
I heard, I heard him. In the spirit of time, yeah, it's, again, the, the final, the final placement of the sign, my guess would probably be one on the building that faces the freeway as well. It would make, wouldn't make sense not to. But again, the size of those signs in comparison to the city of Marina is small.
Fair enough. Just, just a rumor, and I appreciate the added color there. Two other quick comments. I appreciate, Mayor, you mentioning these concern, or echoing my concerns about the sign. I, the city monument sign, and the ownership of that, and what mechanism we as a city have put in place to ensure that that monument sign stays in place in perpetuity. And so I would like staff to kind of take that back as well, and look at any mechanisms. Just provide us some assurance that that's not a concern. Whether that means subdividing a sliver if Mercedes is willing, or some other deed mechanism that we, we might be able to implement. And the last thing I just want to say is, just because I heard some discussion about closed session, and I've long been a very public advocate of this. You know, the Kamala Harris opinion of 2011, 10-206, really talks about only being able to go in closed session when you are entering into a real estate negotiation. We don't own any land here, we're not buying any land, we're not selling any land. It's, it's my opinion that very little of this belongs or deserves to be in closed session, and I do think it should be an open session. And I guess those are, those are my comments. But the big one is, is just ensuring that we have some mechanism to ensure that monument sign is, represents Marina forever, right? And not just for five, 10 years. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. Let's go, Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm sure Mr. Croft understands this, being in the car industry for so long, like negotiations and deals take time, right? And so I would encourage staff, Mr. Croft and the Mercedes of Monterey team, please do not rush the permitting, design review, or any other aspects of this project, because everything's been an emergency, and we're, you know? And so for me, that's when mistakes are made, that's when oversight is done, important details are overlooked. And so moving forward, I don't want any more of these, like, emergencies, and we have to decide today and now. That's not fair, you know, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the community, you know, to say that we don't have the opportunity to perhaps, you know, renegotiate or clawback, whatever, it's, it's just ridiculous to me, I've never heard that before. But I can count to three, and so, you know, I just, please, with everything moving forward, take the time needed to do everything thoughtfully and thoroughly, and let's get away of the set precedence of everything's an emergency, and we're being reactive. I want to be proactive.
Okay, so I'm wondering how we can wrap this up tonight? And what kind of changes we can make tonight that are unilateral, but need to be bilateral, right? Because this is a two-way agreement. And the changes that I understand tonight, that we seem to be, that I'd willing to make a motion, as long as staff can, that we don't hold this project up. Number one change is the monument, the monument sign be somehow confirmed as a condition, along with its maintenance and its long-term, you know, in perpetuity, as long as the business is there, like maybe even longer. So I think sign, staff gets our, our drift on that, that.
Yeah, so I think the motion, we are clarifying the language in there, that it means that they will design, pay for, and construct, working with us to approve what that sign is like, and that we have some type of agreement in place that it will stay there in perpetuity while I'm not sure how long you'd.
But you guys can work that out, and, and the maintenance, right?
Correct, and maintenance, yes.
And then the other point, which is more nebulous, and should not hold this up tonight, is that the two parties discuss revenue sharing at some future, to occur at some future point in time, like the 10-year or 15-year, once Mercedes-Benz hopefully is established and, and doing well, that, that, that there be some revenue sharing of some fashion. Not, you know, like, like we mentioned earlier, but that tonight, we only ask that before this deal is inked, that there is that discussion. So those would be the two things, the monument sign issues and the discussion about what could happen in the future. So I'd like to make that motion, and otherwise approve the, the agreement with the name change.
I second.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the motion. I will support it, but I do want to just make a quick comment that, you know, revenue sharing agreements and these kind of things are a huge logistical and administrative nightmare in the future. We see that with the Sierra Club fund, you know, we just struggle to kind of know who's paying what. And so for that reason, I mean, I'm not super, I have concerns, but I'm happy to support the motion that we have a discussion and see where it goes. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I want to clarify that revenue sharing is more complicated than it has to be. It can just be a contribution made that they agree on now. You know, in the next two weeks, they agree on bilaterally that, starting in year 10, or some other year, 12, 15, that, that the Mercedes will make a contribution to the city of an amount X. It is kind of revenue sharing, but it's really just a contribution perhaps. Okay, any further comment, question, before we go to a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no.
No.
All right, any abstentions? So thank you, everyone, that post-motion passes four to one with Councilmember McAdams in opposition. Thank you to everyone. Ken, thank you for being here tonight. Renee, and everyone involved here, thank you, Doug, and everyone. KSBW, thank you, Zoe and David for being here, and we will be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.